Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the hottest ticket in town. And at this point, would ask Mr. Certon to call the roll. And our fire chief is talking, so I think we may have a problem with the number of people on the floor.
We are at capacity in the building. We have people outside. The problem is, some of those that are outside had signed up and scheduled to speak. So we're trying to work around how we could go about making sure that we don't just pass them by, but if they're not here, then he's going to go check to see if they're out there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all council members. I would like to open with the Bible verse, is that be alright? There is a way which seems to ride into a man, but the end thereof is the way of death, destruction. The preferred lifestyle of those that we're wanting to protect and favor, they're already protected under our amendments. And we are very kind and loving and considerate of their needs and their wants. Chick-fil-A actually gave free chicken sandwiches and lemonade all across the country to the people protesting and had that kiss in. I don't know if you heard about that. So, we are not the hateful ones. We are the loving ones that represent Jesus Christ and His word. Now, I'd like to tell you that as I was mentioning this ordinance, when I was out of town, I was overheard by two successfully dressed ladies who chimed in, interrupting our conversation, and said, "Really? Oh, no, not in Springfield, Missouri. Why would it be so foolish to do that? Listen to us. You don't want that to happen. We are nurses in, and all we can say is that it has devastated our community. Downtown has all changed. You'll be heartsick as you see the closed boarded-up shops that used to be thriving, all because the owners could not deal with the lawsuits and the dropping off of business. Families simply stopped coming. They have decided to go somewhere else than to risk the possible disastrous effects of indecent exposure forced upon their children." Then they said, "And we're not even mentioning the increased cases of HIV, AIDS, and other sexually transmitted diseases we've had to deal with ever since. Crime is up and violent attacks are increasing. We will pray for you in Springfield." End of quote. And it cannot be overstated, this proposed legislation is detrimental to our economy, our health, and the safety of all Springfieldians. You are sworn to protect our youth.
One minute.
This bill is all about legitimizing behaviors and lifestyles that have proven over and over again to be detrimental to impressionable innocent minds. Such confused children grow up more prone to experiment sexually and experience addicting substances, reaping unnecessary heartache, psychological disorders, impairment, life-threatening diseases, and in many cases, early death. Is this what we want for the future of our children? Please don't pass this ordinance, for it will certainly target them to be added to these disheartening statistics. I have a source, and I have a copy for each of you. Conservapedia.com/homosexually, and I have done my research. I've read it, it's very lengthy, but with an open heart and a mind, you will see how this is detrimental all across the country. This smacks of the same forces that removed the fish symbol from the Republic Missouri logo, and we're only here long enough to do their destructive work and then leave. It definitely is foreign to the sensibilities of most of our law-abiding, tax-paying, voting, genteel society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Reverend Timothy Houghlin, my address is on file. I see and hear many things spoken about protection tonight, and for the record, city council members, let's talk about protection. Contended the documents submitted to you through the city clerk's office, which includes the article titled "Gay Revolutionary: A Worn Michael Swift," which expresses hateful mindsets, enumerates violent agendas, and murderous intentions by groups of the homosexual community. The author himself says, "This essay is a cruel fantasy." If any of us would publish such a cruel fantasy, we might be arrested. And notice that there's not a single indication that this is a fictional fantasy, but a cruel fantasy. And here are just a few of the threats found in this article. Threats from within--
One minute.
Threats from within the homosexual community against the rest of us. First, we'll sodomize your sons in our schools, dormitories, locker rooms, movie theater bathrooms, truck stops, the very places you want to give availability to in this ordinance. Here's a threat of murder, "If you dare cry 'faggot, fairy, queerer' at us, we will stab you in your carely hearts and defile your dead puny bodies." Other threats, "We shall raise vast private armies, the family unit must be eliminated, close all churches that condemn homosexuality." And finally, they say, "We too are capable of firing guns." And this is not from the Christian side, this is from, and I'm not even saying all the other side, but groups within the other side. And considering these recent events in Colorado and Chicago, do you want to gamble that these threats are not real? I really urge you to reconsider this amendment and vote no for the protection of the citizens of Springfield.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. I'll get right into it. The issue here tonight is discrimination. I believe this ordinance will have far-reaching and serious consequences. You see, I have gay and lesbian neighbors. We get along well, and we function well in our neighborhood. I believe Jesus loves their soldiers as much as He does anyone else, but He doesn't love their lifestyle. I believe this ordinance will create not less, but more discrimination. I believe this ordinance will breed anger and resentment like never before. I believe small businesses will be closing their doors. I believe to force sexual orientation on our schoolchildren will be a disaster. I believe to try to force this ordinance on private and homeschoolers will cause more anger and litigation and lawsuits than you can imagine. I believe that there will be serious problems in public restrooms. I do not want my daughters or my granddaughters using facilities with gays who think they are women, or transgenders, or men who think they're women are transgenders, who think-- Do you seriously want yourselves or your family members to be confronted in public restrooms by transgenders and those who think they're women, or vice versa? I believe that this will be the great beginning of a serious problem in our city. I believe employers will hire gays and lesbians out of fear of the lawsuits instead of because of their qualified persons. I believe that the greatest form of discrimination in this city is age discrimination. There are many people in their 40s and 50s and 60s, healthy, experienced, able to work, who cannot find work because of their age. You're asking people to step aside who want jobs so the gay and lesbian crowd can have them over other races and groups just because they're gay. I believe if they are more qualified for the job, keep their private lives themselves, fine, but don't demand private businesses and biblical people with biblical convictions to be forced to hire them. They will close their doors and move to other cities or other towns. I believe that we will always live together in this community. How we get along cannot be legislated or forced or demanded by a city council. I believe some redneck who wraps himself in American Fly could go berserk and cause more scenes like we saw in Colorado. I believe that we have gays and lesbians eventually who go berserk and take it out on conservatives. I don't want to see anybody hurt in this city or any other city. I believe what happened at Chick-fil-A with the crowds that showed up in their support of Chick-fil-A proves that this community has already taken a very public stand on traditional values, which are still in place in America and in this city. I believe this ordinance will not allow, will not stop at all harassment of gays or lesbians. It will still go on forever. You cannot legislate how people react to others. I believe this is a Christian community, and any council member or mayor who votes for this ordination will find themselves without a job at their next election. I don't, I believe that this ordinance does not benefit the gay/lesbian community, but will harm their cause even more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our speaker? Mr. Bailey?
I have one. First of all, it's not a job, we're volunteers. I'm not running in April, so that doesn't help me very much. And can we ask that no speakers make any more comments about mass murders in Colorado? I really feel it's inappropriate.
Thank you.
That is fine, but it is a possibility.
Good evening. My name is the Reverend Dr. Phil Snyder. I was born and raised in Springfield, Missouri, and I stand before you this evening in support of this ordinance. I worry about the future of our city. Any accurate reading of the Bible should make it clear that gay rights goes against the plain truth of the Word of God. As one preacher warns, "Man, in overstepping the boundary lines God has drawn by making special rights for gays and lesbians, has taken another step in the direction of inviting the judgment of God upon our land." This step of gay rights is but another stepping stone toward the immorality and lawlessness that will be characteristic of the last days. This ordinance represents a denial of all that we believe in, and no one should force it on us. It's not that we don't care about homosexuals, but it's that our rights will be taken away. And un-Christian views will be forced on us and our children, for we'd be forced to go against our personal morals. Outside government agents are endeavoring to disturb God's established order, it is not in line with the Bible. Do not let people lead you astray. The liberals leading this movement do not believe the Bible any longer, but every good, substantial, Bible-believing, intelligent, orthodox Christian can read the Word of God and know what is happening is not of God. When you run into conflict with God's established order, you have trouble. You do not produce harmony. You produce destruction and trouble, and our city is in the greatest danger that it has ever been in in its history. The reason is that we have gotten away from the Bible of our forefathers. You see, the right of segregation-- I'm sorry, hold on. The right of segregation is clearly established by the holy scriptures, both by precept and example.
One minute.
I'm sorry, I've brought the wrong notes with me this evening. I've borrowed my argument from the wrong century. It turns out what I've been reading to you this whole time are direct quotes from white preachers from the 1950s and the 1960s, all in support of racial segregation. All I have done is simply take out the phrase "racial integration" and substituted it with the phrase "gay rights." I guess the arguments I've been hearing around Springfield lately sounded so similar to these that I got them confused. I hope you will not make the same mistake. I hope you will stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Remember the admonition, this is not a sports arena.
I became a Springfield resident in 1984, and am currently the manager of a Christian business in town. In general, I believe the proposed amendment does not respect the fundamental beliefs and the traditional family values that has made Springfield the great community that she is. Specifically, I believe the amendment that is proposed to hinder discrimination is itself religious discrimination, and is in direct conflict with a preceding and established protection of religious liberty. Under the proposed language change, churches, pastors, and Christian business owners, following their biblical belief and practice, will be considered as breaking the law and will face the threat of prosecution. I also have a reasonable concern for who my church can accept or reject for membership, who can or can't teach in our private schools, who can or can't enroll in our private schools, enforcing diversity training onto our home-school community. I'm concerned for the environment in our locker rooms and our athletic facilities. And I have a reasonable concern of who or what my wife and children will encounter in the public restroom. I have a love and compassion for all men and women, but that doesn't mean that I always agree with them. Just, and likewise, my disagreement and opposition does not mean that I hate them. Thank you.
Are there any questions for our speaker? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Christian Bruin?
Just a moment, Mr. Certon. Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick announcement for our folks that are watching on TV downstairs on the first and second floor. We realize it is a little warm down there, and we apologize, we have turned the AC down, but we are dealing with some older systems, so please bear with us. Thank you. I keep hearing things like, "Given this particular hypothetical scenario, we could be discriminated against based on this or that if we aren't explicitly protected." But why are we basing legislation on a clear and severe lack of evidence, on subjective choices, and on potential scenarios that haven't even been proven to exist? Because this law leaves businesses with no reasonable means of excluding opportunistic perverts and predators, seeking access to innocent women and children in the women's restrooms, or locker rooms, or other such places, it would subject businesses to legal liability for violating the duty of care that they owe to their female employees and customers.
A yes vote for this ordinance would grant extra rights, not for all humans, but for some humans. This ordinance would in effect institutionalize discrimination against heterosexuals. I ask this council to consider what a yes vote would do to over 95% of its people. Creating a protected class with more privilege than others would at the same time create a class without protection.
One minute.
A yes vote would create a law that would fit quite nicely in the Jim Crow era. Springfield will be a place where there is law for lower-class citizens and there's a law for higher-class citizens. After 1964, the Americans enjoyed equal rights under the Civil Rights Act. Never in my wildest dreams would I have imagined that we would come back to this, where some Americans find themselves at the back of the bus simply because of their sexual identity. And as a black man, I find this type of thinking unacceptable. I offer that, I'm offended that anyone even consider dividing his people against one another. This is America, this is 2012, and we have come too far as a nation to return back to the dark times prior to 1964. If this council votes yes, you will brand yourselves as the Jim Crow Council of 212. This is a losing proposition for all citizens, no matter what your sexual orientation is. Thank you.
So, there has been a lot of emotion shared here tonight, and here's the deal. I don't think that emotion in this particular case actually helps us very much. We want to make something that works best for everybody. I'm a big fan of making peace. I'm a business owner, have an e-commerce agency here in Springfield, we employ nearly 30 people. And just for the record, you know, I'm not a big fan of discrimination, think it's a bad deal and whatever. If I were in the LGBT community, like, this is actually bad for them, what they're trying to promote. Because what it creates is it creates a situation where you like, are forcing people that may hate you to employ you. It's a bad deal. Like, why would you want to work with someone that hates you supposedly, right? And the truth is, discrimination will always happen. We are not going to legislate it into non-existence. We're not going to. We're gonna have to live with it to a certain degree.
One minute.
Someone made a comment of like, homosexual employer, like, if I'm, you know, heterosexual and I say, "Hey, my moral stance is, I think it's just, I think it's really immoral to be gay," and the gay employer's like, "Well, you're fired because you believe that." I'm like, "Okay, you know, tough luck, go on and find a new employer." I mean, this is, this is America, the whole idea is like, fight hard, work your way up, you know? Don't, don't go into a place of like entitlement, or I need the government, or I need some, some other entity or some support to work it. I mean, man, the guys that came over here originally, they worked their butts off to get what they got. They had to fight hard, they started with nothing, and they made something out of it. So, if you're in the LGBT community, great! You know, screw all of the discrimination, all of that, make it work! That's what all of us have to do, we've got to be productive, we've got to be effective, we've got to be good team players, that's how it works! And if there's a few people that discriminate against you, dust your feet off and move on.
I've heard several times this evening that we already constitutionally offer protections in the state, and other references have been made to that in several speakers' testimony this evening. Is that true?
I'm not sure that's totally accurate, but we will look at that and get back to you and see what types of protections have been honored by the courts when people brought lawsuits.
I am a pastor, and I've already spoke once on this subject, and I think we got to look at it from a, this ordinance may be being problematic. And why I say that is because it really fails to protect a lot of people's cherished religious freedoms in Springfield, Missouri. What do I mean by that? Well, it fails to protect the residents, fails to protect the business owners, and it tells me, as a pastor, "Hey, Mark, you could practice your religion, but be sure to keep it inside the four walls of your church, but do not bring it out into the public, and definitely don't bring it into the business area." But this law clearly puts Springfield law above Missouri law, it puts this law above the United States law, and I've got to say it, it definitely puts this law above God's law. You know it, and you know it.
Thank you, Mr. Certon.
Bless you.
As a father, I pose it on the basis that I and my wife have the right to teach our kids, and no one else. And this is a religious issue for me. It may not be for promo, but it is for me. And I'm the one who has the right to rear my kids the way that I want to, and this is extremely important to me. This is maybe the number one thing in my life that's important, is my kids and how they're reared. And I, I will do whatever it takes to see that that right is protected. It is an inalienable right, endowed by the Creator, not given by you guys. As an employee, I don't want to live in fear that my religious beliefs are going to get me fired. It may seem funny in the morally conservative Springfield, Missouri, but my employers may be so afraid of what this is going to cause them if they allow me to work for them when I don't believe like promo. And so they may fire me just for a comment that I make in a group of people who perhaps even agree with me. I resent, I resent the possibility that I have to be afraid, and I've already experienced this in my employment place, the possibility that I'm gonna have to be afraid about being fired because of this legislation. That's wrong. This is not a discussion about rights equality, this is a discussion about tyranny over me and my family, for me. I, I feel that I have great respect for people who have different points of view. I do have my own point of view, but I respect people who have different points of view. But who are you guys to decide what I say? Who are you guys to decide what my kids are taught? And who are you guys to decide how I run my business according to my religious preferences? Who are you? Thank you so much.
Are there any questions? Mr.--
Ms. Indez.
Thank you.
What is the impact to the public school system with this ordinance?
We do not impact the public school system with this. Educational function is granted to the school district and the Department of Education under the Constitution, so we cannot impact what happens at the schools.
Thank you.
I am the family's pastor at Cherry Street Baptist Church. I believe the question should be asked as to the need for this change. Is this problem in our community so great as to codify in our city ordinances this change? Have there been any studies done and dated presented as to the level of discrimination in Springfield against those whose sexual orientation and gender identity fall outside the norms of our community? The cornerstone of this discussion probably hinges in the minds of many people as to whether or not the LGBT community should be a protected class of citizens. The discussion of this topic will take more time than I am allowed. However, an easy search of the studies and research on this subject shows enough differing conclusions to cast doubt upon the merits of giving the same protection as that given to minorities, women, the disabled, et cetera. Section 6234, paragraph 7 is a religious exemption clause. There is no protection for religious schools to be sued if a plaintiff wants to argue under this clause that the primary purpose of a faith-based school is educational, not religious. The same could be said for other entities like daycares and elder care facilities. If a plaintiff argues the primary function is not religious, these entities would be forced to violate their constitutionally-protected beliefs.
No one asks or is able to choose the race into which one is born, it is entirely in hands of God or whatever natural process you would like to attribute to it. Who a person has sex with is totally in the hands of sexual partners. Who you choose to have sex with is totally different than the race into which you were born. The counterpart may, the counterpoint may be made of desire or attraction to the people of the same gender. This is really a moot point, seeing as how any crack addict has a desire for crack, but we as a society disapprove. Alcoholics have a desire for alcohol, but no decent person wants to enable an alcoholic but to help him suppress his desires. In short, desires are mutable and oftentimes should be repressed while race is completely immutable.
But I'm a local business owner of three businesses, the largest of which employs 30 employees and has a revenue of about $4 million. In addition to having three businesses inside the city limits of Springfield, I also attend church here, and my kids attend school here, at a local Christian school. I'm here in opposition to this ordinance for several reasons. I am a Christian tonight, as I stand before you, and I believe that hate and bigotry are not the proper reactions to this bill. As a Christian, the Bible clearly tells me to be loving, kind, and respectful while still standing firmly against all forms of sin. First of all, I don't believe this bill is necessary. I challenge the sponsors of this bill to show proof of widespread discrimination. The other thing that I would like to indicate is the 2010 census, which I have copies of here, and I can have a copy for each of those, talks about demographics, and it analyzes household makeups, particularly married opposite-sex couples, unmarried opposite-sex couples, and then same-sex couples.
One minute.
And if, it provides detailed analysis that shows us that discrimination is not widespread. Here's why. If discrimination in employment and education and other areas was taking place, these numbers would show that. But what the numbers show is that same-sex couples have higher educational attainment, they have higher household income, and they have higher unemployment statistics. They're more employed and they're more funded. The discrimination is simply not taking place. There's isolated incidences, but we can't see that additionally. My final point is this, the overwhelming infringement upon the religious rights. I firmly believe that if this were implemented, that there would be further discrimination against an already-protected class, and we would be regressing in our goal to get rid of discrimination. Thank you for your time.
Both sides can claim that we are being discriminated against. I believe that the Bible and prayer are the foundation to all matters of life, including education, but I cannot send my children to a public school and they be taught to pray and taught to use their Bible for the issues of life. I could stand here before you and try to pill the case of how not having these things in school is discrimination against what I believe, but instead, to live peaceably, my husband and I work harder and sacrifice more to provide an education to our children that is consistent with what we believe.
I'm against this bill because the laws we have on discrimination were never meant to be about personal choices on morality. Logic dictates that you cannot have that about personal choices because the second you force acceptance of one person's moral code, you automatically discriminate against the people that have the opposite moral code. Discrimination laws were about things that had nothing to do with morality. The race or gender you're born into is neither moral nor immoral. They aren't things that you choose to be part of or not, then they are things that you can obviously spot by sight only. In every, I challenge also to say that every single company in existence has a moral code that their employees have to live up to or else they're fired. And I, it's, nothing wrong with that at all. At IHOP, I witnessed a waitress not only vagrantly flirt with a customer, give her number, and offer vulgar comments on what they would do when they met up. Under IHOP's rules, she would have been fired for this because they want to uphold their reputation as a family restaurant, and there are little ears that don't need to hear that. I'm sure nobody would see IHOP as hateful or discriminatory for firing her for this. If this story isn't clear enough for you, what about when a school fires somebody for pedophilia, but that person happens to be a member of the North American Man-Boy Love Association? That's their chosen sexual orientation. Is this discrimination as well? Hopefully, these two examples will kick-start some common sense on this subject, that a personal choice on what moral code you follow in life has to be left up to the individual, the business owner, or individual school authorities, and not dictated by the government. If you do not agree with the moral code of one company, work for a company that has the code you agree with, and if there's none in existence, start your own company.
For instance, let's say that I'm advertising for a receptionist in my law firm that sits on the front desk. In comes a person dressed as a woman. However, I don't hire him because of the embarrassment to my firm, the possible loss of business, the difficulty with my already-existing employees, and the fact that I didn't leave my moral beliefs at the door when I left home that morning. So, if the ordinance is in place and a complaint is made, then I'm going to be investigated. And I'm faced with a situation of telling the truth, which I hope I would choose to do, to the person that's investigating me from the mayor's commission, and then I'm going to be fined. And then I'm going to have to submit, be submitted to diversity training. And then comes the bad part. The ACLU now represents the gentleman that was applying for a job in my firm, and I'm going to be sued for damages and punitive damages on top of that. And I don't have any insurance to cover me for this. So, that's the way these types of things go. Also, in the community involvement meeting minutes that Ms. Reshevsky spoke about earlier, I obtained a copy of those minutes. Kelly Johnson from the mayor's commission presented the proposal to the four council members that were there. And she was asked about the concerns regarding the loss of customers to a business, and her response was that the mayor's commission would-- her response was that the mayor's commission would discuss the issue with the employer and explain to them what the ordinance dictates. Councilman Roshevsky noted that Springfield is one of the more conservative cities in Missouri, but that she believes she needs to support individual rights. Councilman Beaker said it was long overdue, the proposal was. Councilman Rush noted his support of the ordinance, and Councilman Fisk expressed her support. These people have already made up their minds, and
Thank you, sir.
I feel as if we're wasting our breath here tonight if that's the case because they are to represent the people of Springfield.
Thank you, sir.
If the people would vote, they would vote no, ladies and gentlemen.
You're talking about what your eternity means to you. And if we recognize that this particular ordinance may put a business owner or somebody else, a landlord, property owner, what have you, into a position where they have to violate their own personal religious beliefs in order to fall in line with the law, are we not condoning violating the most sacred right of the individual? And if that's the case, and here's the question I want you to ask yourself over the next two weeks. If that's the case, what exactly is it that the government cannot violate when it comes to our personal rights and liberties?
First, I would like to read a passage of scripture that relates to this ordinance. John 8:3 through 11. "The teachers of the law and the Pharisees brought in a woman caught in adultery. They made her stand before the group and said to Jesus, 'Teacher, this woman was caught in the act of adultery, and the law Moses commanded us to stone such women. Now what do you say?'" They were using this question as a trap in order to have a basis for accusing Jesus, but Jesus bent down and started to write on the ground with his finger. "When they kept on questioning him, he straightened up and said to them, 'If any one of you is without sin, let him be the first to throw a stone at her.' Again he stooped down and wrote on the ground. At this, those who heard began to go away, one at a time, the older ones first until only Jesus was left, with the woman still standing there. Jesus straightened up and asked her, 'Woman, where are they? Has no one condemned you?' 'No one, sir,' she said. 'Then neither do I condemn you,' Jesus declared. 'Go now and leave your life of sin.'" First of all, I want to point out Jesus' demeanor toward this woman was kind. The people that came to kill this woman, because she was breaking the law, God pushed them away, and God said, "No, I love this woman. I care for this woman deeply." You know, Christians, we're also supposed to love. We're supposed to love everybody. But what does Jesus say? What does Jesus say? What's his last response? "I don't condemn you, but leave your life of sin." This is what the ordinance fails to do. Rather than helping homosexuals out of sin, it helps them feel comfortable in it. The ordinance is against God, His word, and His people. You know the message?
One minute.
Jesus died and rose again to take away our sin. Our sin is what separates us from God, and He caused us to turn to Him in repentance and leave our life of sin. But this ordinance is the very opposite. For that, I ask you to change your minds, to help America be the life of happiness and freedom it was meant to be. Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you.
First of all, I want to clarify that I think all people, all people, should be treated with respect and dignity, and I also want to let you know that I have a close family member who, who is involved in the homosexual lifestyle. I also believe that decisions should be made based upon factual and accurate information. Adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the code is creating a special class of individuals based solely on their sexual behavior, behavior which is neither genetically determined nor unchangeable. If we look at the scientific data, not emotion and not what we're told by the media, we find that homosexuality is not genetically determined. The widespread popular belief that science has proven a genetic origin is not supported by the scientific research. A Northwestern University study of twins by activists J. Michael Bailey and Richard Pillard reported that when one identical twin is homosexual, in 52% of the cases, the other twin was also homosexual. The media reported this as proof that homosexuality was a genetic trait. But let's remember that identical twins have an identical genetic makeup. If homosexuality is genetic, then 100% of those brothers should be homosexual as well. Additionally, similar twin studies have found a rate for homosexuality that is anywhere, that is anywhere near as high as the 52% reported by Bailey and Pillard. A 2002 study in the American Journal of Sociology using large population-based sample found a rate of only 6.7 among identical twins. Both science and common sense tell us that if homosexuality were genetic, 100% of the time, where one brother of identical twins is homosexual, the other would be also. This is just simply not the case. These twin studies show that homosexuality is not a genetic trait. Skin color, eye color, and height are genetic traits. Homosexuality is not. It is a behavior. Contrary to what we're told in the media, there is much evidence that homosexuality is changeable. One of the strongest pieces of evidence comes from an unlikely source, Dr. Robert Spitzer, a psychiatrist who is instrumental in changing the APA's designation of homosexuality as a mental disorder. Dr. Spitzer had the intellectual honesty to accept a challenge to study the results of what is called reparative therapy for homosexuality. Dr. Spitzer studied 200 people who had reported some measure of change from homosexual to heterosexual orientation. He published his conclusions in 2003. The study indicates that some men and lesbians following reparative therapy report that they have made major changes from a predominantly homosexual orientation to predominantly heterosexual orientation. Can I make one last point? It's important. Can I make one last point?
Thank you. Next.
I believe that the primary thing that has made the United States a great nation is our stance on freedom and liberty. Those are the things upon which our country was founded.